Good morning. Welcome to the 19th, 2019 Public Hearing for the City of New York City by a Morris Preservation Commission. I'll call the roll. Chair Carroll?
Here.
Commissioner Blain?
Here.
Commissioner McGarren?
Here.
Commissioner Chaplin?
Here.
Commissioner Chen?
Here.
Commissioner Kevinship?
Here.
Commissioner Dolpley?
Here.
Commissioner Gassus?
Here.
Commissioner Jackson?
Here.
Commissioner Luthy?
Here.
Commissioner Paul Fritzen?
Good morning, Commissioners. Item one this morning is LPC 1435A, Public School 31, 425 Grand Course in the Bronx, Block 2346, Lot 1. Item proposed for the Commission's calendar is the proposed rescission of a landmark designation consisting of a vacant lot located at site of Public School 31. On November 8th, 2013, the Department of Buildings issued an emergency declaration to demolish the building due to unsafe and potentially hazardous conditions. And presenting this item this morning is Timothy Fod, our Director of Special Projects and Strategic Plan.
Good morning, Commissioners. On December 17th, 2013, the Commission approved the advisory report on the demolition of PS31 located at 425 Grand Course in the Bronx. The report acknowledged the Department of Buildings' emergency declaration, the building's poor structural condition, and the multiple efforts over many years to rehabilitate its structure. PS31 was designated an individual landmark in 1986, and its design with collegiate Gothic style represented an important step in the development of this class's application to New York public schools in the late 19th century. Its architect, prolific C.D.J. Steiner, was influential to the development of the city's educational buildings during his tenure as superintendent of school buildings. To date, LPC has designated many public schools design by this number. As was presented to the Commission in 2013, serious issues were discovered after designation, which led to multiple efforts by a variety of firms to rehabilitate the building. Because of its poor condition, however, the school was eventually vacated in 1997 and temporary shoring embracing was installed. In 2012, after Superstorm Sandy, a damage assessment found that its condition had further deteriorated as a result of the storm, including damage to the shoring embracing. In 2013, the Department of Buildings determined that the building posed a threat to public safety and issued an emergency declaration for full demolition. Subsequently, the Commission voted on this advisory report, and this slide shows an image of the landmark shortly after Superstorm Sandy. The slide on the left here shows an aerial view of the landmark site after demolition in Yelliver. Because this designated school building has been demolished, nothing of architectural, historic, or cultural significance remains on the landmark site. LPC staff recommends calibrating the proposed rescission of the landmark and the landmark site for a public hearing. We plan to have a public hearing on this item to vote in December. And this concludes my presentation, and staff is available for questions.
Are there any questions? So, you know, as you all may maybe recall, in 2013, we issued the approval of the motion to get rid of the block, the building's demolition services to address the removal of the landmark site. So, the whole public hearing in December, and this is just a motion to calendar it today.
So, we have a full opportunity to discuss this whole situation.
We'll have an opportunity to discuss it, and we'll take one of the testimonies. You have a motion to calendar?
Second.
On favor? Okay, so that's how we're going to do this in the center.
Good morning, Commissioners. We're going to move to the Preservation Department agenda, starting with item number one. This is a public meeting item, LPC 19-32231, an application for a certificate of appropriateness of the block, Block 1230, Lot 12, 928 St. Marx Avenue, Public Works 3, Dorit District. The notice from Block 5, Scott Roadhouse, decided by Albert Martin, full certainty in 2007. The application is to legalize operations of the flood areaway and installation of curb cuts without LPC permits. This was read into the record in the public hearing October 29th, 2019, and was not presented at that time.
Good morning, Commissioners. We're on the Leeside Preservation Staff. The subject property is 928 St. Marx Avenue, located on the south side of State Marks between Kingston and Albany Avenue, within the Crown Heights North 3 and Starwood, which was designated on March 24th, 2019. As noted, there is a notice of violation issued for alterations to areaway, including removing areaway wall, paving, and installation of fence with a curb. These photographs show the current conditions as described in the violation. A DOV permit was filed for a curb cut, but not pulled prior to designation and was later disproved. Another permit from DOV was granted for areaway alterations and a curb cut, and that was pulled after designation. However, the DOV permit references an LPC permit that was granted for interior work only. The owner is seeking to legalize the condition as it is. A DOT permit was issued to remove the land post. These photographs here show the property at the time of designation. Lastly, staff would just like to note that there are four existing driveways or parking pads on that block of St. Marx Avenue, however, only 931 St. Marx actually has a curb. The other three properties are ten, are curbing, so the owners or tenants or whomever must just drive over, should be clear, must drive over the curb to get onto their driveway or parking pad. Okay, applicant is here to further discuss the proposal and answer any questions.
If you have a question, please come up and state your name.
Charlie, Charles, here. As you see, green is the subject property, 928 St. Marx, and red, the red highlighted properties are the properties that have, that have existing curb cuts indirectly in front of the property. These are some of the photos, actually on St. Marx Avenue, between New York and Albany Avenue, that have, have existing curb cuts and driveways. And these are additional properties in the district that have, that have existing curb cuts and a driveway in front of their property. So, we removed approximately three feet of the areaway wall to have, to have, our heat pad in front of the property, and doing so, we wanted to maintain the historic, you know, the historicness of the property. So, what we did with another fence, we just mimicked the motif on the windows, and we brought it out to the front gate. And then the curb cut, we maintained. So, as we did the driveway, we maintained the existence of concrete blocks on the side of it, and this is the curb cut that we created here to access it to the property.
You have any questions? Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this application? And we do have a resolution from Community Board of Aids recommending the Commission deny our petition.
I just wanted to inquire, if you'd like the Community Board's decision to deny this request.
So, the applicant requested retroactive approval for removal of area with a wall and gate, an exclamation of the driveway. The dates of record indicate that the historicity was designated after the 40-day hold. This is sort of the technical aspect of what happens when you file a commission for designation process. We understand that applicant's materials include four driveways on this specific block, thus hoping to solidify their claim to legalization. However, the other driveways and improvements listed on the date of designation were therefore grandfathered, unlike the applicant's driveways. In addition, I make the Crown Heights North Association provide a letter indicating that they have support legalization of these driveways. We are aware of our role, their role as advisory, and we hope LPC agrees with the board's assertion that forgiveness should be granted in this case and denied in this case. So, I, they don't specifically say that I think they were in favor of the residential character, or we'll have to consider whether we call it historic pattern to create a party path, if they're not there just anymore.
I think Kate Warner's just asking if she could speak.
Of course, please.
Good morning. My name is Nubia Shalaka, and I appreciate so much your time this morning. And so, I really think, I just wanted to highlight that the concept that this wasn't done for designation, although we could have, is really just, in essence, to the confusion of the process. And so, I really think it's important, we bought the house and was doing work before it was designated. And if we knew that this was going to be a problem, we could have very easily done it before then, but we did not understand that that was a process issue. So, we could have, and we would have if we would have known. In addition, the concept of the reasonableness and the appropriateness in taking the painstaking effort to copy the original gate from the 1800s, literally people stop by our house every day to say how beautiful it is. We have our neighbors on all sides submitting their testament to the appropriateness and how beautiful it is, and wishing all the neighbors would take such great care of their property. And so, making the example of folks who kind of knowingly violate the rules, and I greatly value LPC, and historic sites which are already moved here, I really want to live in this block and value the fact that people can't do things that are outside of the character. And I really think that what we have done is totally undermined the character, and we tried to follow every single process that we knew, including DOV and DOV and LPC. And so, to penalize what seems to fit within the neighborhood in light of what is a mistake by others in granting us a DOV permit that we understood incorporated an LPC permit is really not fair to the average homeowner who tries to do the right thing.
So, John, I may need you to help with this, but I guess as we understand that there were two applications at DOV prior to designation, one was not approved, and that was specifically for the areaway work and the curb cut, and it was pulled, meaning the applicant went to DOV, paid the fee, and got their permit after the designation.
Okay, unless you're.
And then there was a second application for similar work that attached an LPC permit for interior alterations, and that was also issued after designation?
I'm not sure when that was issued, but the point is that no DOV permit for the curb cut was issued prior to designation. The work was approved by the Commission, but the permit never pulled, and that was the landmark's law requires. And indirectly, was it referenced in the DOV permit to interior work that landmark had to do? So, there was a second DOV permit.
Did we ever, we ever approved this work at any time?
No.
The curb cut?
It came before us. And I'm sorry, when was designation?
Designation was in March of 2015.
Yeah, so, you know, DOT has to actually approve the curb cut. The DOV issues the permits for curb cuts.
Yes.
So, one gets a permit from the Department of Buildings. And, and so, it seems as though DOV erroneously issued the permit after designation based on permit for other work that needs to be. I have a question though. It's not common to have a curb cut on this block. Is that correct? So, there are four other grandfathered curb cuts, and Brian, can you tell us, are they all at the front areaways or rowhouses, or are they on the driveways?
They, they all are, they all are similar building types, and they are rowhouses. There are other types of buildings on this, on this block, including some apartment buildings, but all of the parking pads or driveways are in a similar technology.
And were they prior to designation?
Yes, all four prior to designation. They all do have, as you can see here, like fences and gates that are kind of similar to what this property has done.
I have one more question, I'm sorry. Can you see, is the standard operating procedure for DOT to approve a curb cut after designation? I mean, would they do that?
The DOT permit was specifically for the removal of a land post. I don't think they actually, from what I understand, only DOV actually issues curb cuts. DOT, the DOT permit was only for the removal of a light switch was in front of the property, which I think you can see in some of the photos right here, to believe that's right where it was, or that happens.
I would watch the lawyers standing there. I mean, DOV issues the curb cuts, as long as, as long as it applies to zoning, they would be permitted to have a curb cut here in the neighborhood.
They were truly having a superland post to prevent it.
So, really what's core is, is the curb cut, the south, and the curb, and then of course, the removal of the areaway wall, revealing the areaway and the fence. I would note that unlike the other four curb cuts, this one did retain maybe two-thirds or half of, or more than half of its areaway wall, and the curb cut is a rather certain side. I don't know if that's a bit, if it's living or anything.
And when was this done again, in terms of designation? How much time elapsed from designation to work?
The, the, I don't have, the designation date was 2015. I'm not sure the date that the DOV permit exactly was pulled. I do have that elsewhere. I believe it was, this looks like it was January 2018.
The DOV, and gave the long, strong message, yeah. So, so the, I mean, so the many owners got a violation, so there's, so I guess it tries to. Normally, I think we would not approve a curb cut, areaway, or rowhouse, and he's trying to, so there are questions, is there something that's impacted here, walls within and around, appropriate? And, and equity, in some cases where things have been installed, we give people time to correct it, and that's something that we can have a discussion about as well. This is not actually an installation, it can be easy, which I'm not sure that, that extra time actually helps so much, but why don't we have a much, because the hearings are very, 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 so let's start first with appropriateness.
If I don't find it appropriate at all, it was coming before us as a new application I am being prepared to deny as the presentation is. As a citizen of New York City, who has been dealing with curbing, we are proceeding from time to time, says, these folks need a break. This, this was a DOV mistake, and they should not suffer.
I thought that was very clear.
I'm a law officer, so I think that's the problem, and that's why I'd say, you know, that the reality is that they didn't break. And part of that reality is it was done very well.
Right.
It's not slogged, it was done, there are other examples of this along the street. The applicant made the point, I was trying to hope that the dates were much closer to the designation, and actually, they seem to be not that close, but nonetheless, it was a new district, maybe people didn't really get to what it was, or what it was. So, I'm, I'm a solid community set, glad a citizen of New York is taking over, because it's welcome, and, and there are others along the street that are like this, or maybe not even this all the time, that it's not a good thing.
I'm usually the person who's a little tougher on these things, and that's generally because I think I'm being, I'm all kind of feel, I often feel like I'm being lied to across the, et cetera. I don't feel that way here, so I, you know, I do agree with what's already been said. I would like to ask our council later, we are, say nice here.
I think, I think the key here is that it's not, it's not adequate to say, you remain safe, these people will try to follow the process, and therefore, we're doing a break. That's not what we can do here. I think the, if we, the feeling that was done here, there are grounds for appropriateness to do a block, and that, and how we're working it done, that those are the factors that we should be focusing on, not on, underwritten by mistake, by a sister agency.
Yeah, I, I feel, I'll excuse them if they're so, yeah, but they don't have a side. I feel that, as they stated, if they had applied, if they had applied before the district was created, they would have been able to do this. And looking around this particular particular district, there are a lot of these ground cuts and that go under the, the, so they had reasonable expectation of thinking that it was inappropriate, and they not being landmark experts, obviously, they didn't have the determination for themselves. And at that point, landmarks, when it started their work, they'd rather than make a mark in their own, they believed that they were doing something appropriate, and strove to make it as appropriate and possible. We have some similar situations in my own district, where there's people partnering with it. And generally, I, you know, obviously, I don't think that kind of situation is something we want to encourage or think of. But in this particular context, in these two blocks, I, I feel like there are, not just in this block, but in the other block, several of these, which are in front of town axes, and were there when the district was designated. Many times, we say, you know, some of the things that have been designated, were yet being preserved, whether or not, they, they, we would, at this time, look at it and make it difficult. So, anyway, I'm, I'm in support, but I don't know what I'm saying pertains enough to our state, to be appropriateness, but I feel on this particular context, that there are enough of these, and the quality of what they've done is appropriate to fit in with the existing landmark history, which has, but would have, has been, we've got all of these, which are there.
I don't steer to support what people are saying. I'm, I'm trying to look at it, and going to walk in pages, what would happen if this came before us. I don't think that we would approve it for it, for us, so it's really a question of how close can we get to that standard within our recognition of the particular conditions that, that surrounds this application. I don't give attention to the provision of law, it's not a story sidewalk, it's not, you know, I think, so I don't think much about it. I think that the only area where, I, I mean, I think the height of the, the gate is appropriate. I just question the placement of the gate relative to the front, which doesn't seem to be the way the gates were, could be in that district. I think if had this come before us, and had even otherwise predisposed to approving it, I think that instead of a sliding gate that was kind of on the city side of the areaway, we might ask for a swinging gate or something that was in line with the, the rest of the fences, all the other gates that were in there, that they showed were swinging. And most of the areaway gates, the standing gates, were swinging, they're all in line. So, I mean, they might be able to work the staff, if they might to, if others agreed that, that it would make it a little bit better. And because I, I just do worry that this could become something that's on the road where it's back to us, or be a slightly better, slightly contextual if it were on.
Swing.
Right. It wouldn't be in front of the area.
I agree, but I was trying to figure out what it was that was throwing the, the swing line, it's the, it's the, it's the overrun of it, into, into the area in front of the wall and the sun. So, you know, I think I would be willing to prove, to adopt that, to suit the, to set it back.
Okay, so I, give you a second, okay, great. So, I think that everyone agrees that given the context, and this block has already a number of other curb cuts and parking pads grandfathered on the street, and the work here was done sensibly, with only three feet of, or two walls removed, and the rest of it is maintained, and it's otherwise kind of contained in the inside of the area. If we can't find this appropriate, however, the gate should be a swing gate, set back with no walls, I think a wall, and ideally swinging, and possible, working with cost and costations. And I think that the sidewalk, the side of the sidewalk, curb cuts.
Okay, in the matter of 928 St. Marx Avenue, in the time and place of the, for the historic district, this is an application to legalize the alterations to the front areaway and installation of curb cut without landmark designation, which is warranted. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are going to feature or contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Crown Heights North 3, historic district. I recommend approval for the modification of the, the modification of the retaining walls and installation of the curb cut and parking pad, retain portions of the historic fabric, and create an opening that is similar to altered areaway and other rowhouses on the block. Second, that the design and quality of the ironwork and paving is appropriate for the building and the historic district. And third, that the work has not diminished the special architectural and historic character of the building and the integrity of the street's state. I recommend that, that working the staff change the architecture to a swing gate set back from the wall.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you, you, the other.
So there are other gates in front of the areaways. And the other, there are the metal gates on the block in front of the wall.
I didn't say, and I will add that the context includes other gates similar to this one within the wall on the historic district.
Colin Baker?
Hi.
So with the proof for that modification, you can continue to work with Brian and help him with the draft.
We're going to move to item number two. This is L P C twenty dash zero zero two zero five, application for certificate of appropriateness for those that had in block seven, nine, eight, block four, nine. Six ninety-five, Sixth Avenue, New York City, historic district. Commercial palace style apartment store built in phases between eighteen ninety-nine and nineteen eleven, designed by a series of architectural firms including Flotting Shipholme Company, Buckman T. Store, Buckman Fox, and Taylor &amp; Lee. Application to construct rooftop edition, install mechanical and railings, replace canopy, install lighting and signage, modify ground floor, and floor area. This was last presented at the public meeting on October eighth, two thousand and nineteen, and our action is taken at that time.
Good morning, Commissioners, Holly Hughes, Preservation Staff. This item is six ninety-five, Sixth Avenue, located between West Twenty-Second Street and West Twenty-Third Street in the Ladies Mile Historic District. The item was initially heard at the public hearing of August sixth, two thousand and nineteen, where there was no forum and no action was taken. The commissioners that were present at the time expressed support for the majority of the proposed work. However, some expressed concerns regarding the height, massing, and visibility of the rooftop addition, glazing pattern of the visible portions of the addition over the West Twenty-Second Street facade, and the removal of vault lights at the face of the West Twenty-Second Street facade. So at that public hearing, the commissioners requested that the applicant explore reducing the rooftop addition by lowering the floor to ceiling heights and re-studying the massing, re-studying the glazing pattern at visible portions of the rooftop addition, and retaining the vault lights. In response to these initial comments, the applicant presented the following changes at the public meeting on October eighth, two thousand and nineteen. Reducing the overall height of the rooftop addition by lowering the floor to ceiling heights by one foot at each of the three floors for a total reduction of three feet. Modifying the glazing pattern at the West Twenty-Second Street portion of the rooftop addition, and incorporating the vault lights into the threshold of the sidewalk. However, no action was taken at that time. Some commissioners still expressed concerns about the rooftop addition, and requested that the applicant continue re-studying the design and shape of the addition to reduce visibility. And at the visible portion above the West Twenty-Second Street facade, relocating the mechanicals or revising the screening to minimize visibility. The applicants have revised the proposal in response to these comments by reconfiguring the core and removing screening to address visibility over the West Twenty-Second Street And adjusting the massing of the rooftop addition, leading to a reduction of the overall visibility from certain vantage points. This is the top floor of the addition in plan. Here, in the proposed plan, you can see the modifications to the core. An elevator and telecom room have been removed, resulting in a decrease in square footage and the shifting of this portion of the top floor of the rooftop addition to the north, resulting in a setback here at the West Twenty-Second Street facade. The mechanical screening here has been removed at the westernmost portion, leaving the mechanical equipment exposed. And a mechanical hoover is being proposed for the pump room in the center and louver glazing. This is a result of those modifications at the West Twenty-Second Street facade. The lower left was the image that was previously proposed, and the lower right is the image of the proposal that you are reviewing today. This shows the modification in the shape of the rooftop addition. The red line indicates the new footprint of the first and second floors of the proposed rooftop addition, showing a reduction in square footage at that second floor, and a modification in the geometry, eliminating the visibility over the Sixth Avenue facade, and an overall reduction in visibility from specific vantage points. So on the right, you can see an axon of the proposal, including occupied spacing green, mechanical vault in light orange, and mechanical equipment in dark orange. So this is showing you that setback at the West Twenty-Second Street facade, the elimination of the mechanical screening, and then the louver here at the pump room. Also showing you the reduction in the overall massing, right here, eliminated at Sixth Avenue They also, you can see, previously proposed and the proposed altered the shape on the north side. So here's a visibility map, and then the matrix of visibility for your reference as we go through some of the updated visibility photos. So this, this is U G from Sixth Avenue between West Twenty-Third and West Twenty-Fourth Streets, and was a concern for the commissioners at the last meeting. On the left was the previously proposed, and on the right is the current proposal, showing that reduction of square footage and the modification of the shape. This is V C from Sixth Avenue and West Twenty-Second Street, was also a concern for commissioners, and was the view that generated comments about re-studying the mechanicals at the top floor of the rooftop addition. Here you see the setback of the core, the removal of the screening, and then the louver at the pump room. So this is V B from West Twenty-Third Street, close to the corner of Sixth Avenue. The massing at the first floor of the addition has been modified and is no longer visible. V U from Sixth Avenue down West Twenty-Second Street shows the reduced visibility due to the reduction in bulk at the second floor of the proposed addition. V H from West Twenty-Fourth Street and Sixth Avenue shows a reduction in the visibility due to the modification in shape. V W over the parking lot on West Twenty-Fourth Street also shows a reduction in visibility due to the modification in shape. And lastly, V N from West Twenty-Third Street shows a change in the visibility due to the reduction of bulk at the second floor of the rooftop addition and a modification in shape. So in your hand note, you'll also find in the appendix additional visibility shots. The applicants are here.
Are there any questions for all of the applicants?
Maybe you can answer it if not, maybe the designers can, it's a totally designed question. I'm just interested to know if the unusual shape of it in the plan was derived principally from the ability to not be seen, or is it drawn from some other...
What's it based on?
Okay, I missed those hearings, so that was important to me because I think it's an interesting principle that we might apply going forward. I think in very many ways to make a plan work, it's not always at right angles, et cetera, et cetera. So that's why I'm...
Yeah, that explains that was to address and minimize visibility. The resulting issue is that from the long views, where you still saw large portions of it, you had an unusual geometry that almost called more attention to it. So some of these changes today will simplify it so that we do see it from the long views, and you're seeing it over portions of the facade and the contents of other buildings with rooftop features that looks like a typical rooftop creation. And I think the view that you want to say is, too, that is all of the concerns that we have. Any other thoughts?
It's great, it's really, I'm a day, so it's very, it's an interesting project in that it really does catalog a number of approaches to visibility at the rooftop, and it does it successfully. Very, very successful. I didn't hear that much, no, did you say?
I did, I was the person most vocal about that to do the review. So you've got me now on page ten, that works. And I do appreciate, you know, it may seem like a small amount of change, I'm sure that enormous amount of work went into trying to figure out how to do the jigsaw puzzle, squeezing everything in, et cetera, et cetera.
More, more shifting, I'm sure, a lot of, a lot of, every word.
Yep, so, but I just appreciate it, and I think it's perfectly appropriate.
Everina?
I think they did a great job. It was useful, visual, touchstone.
That's great, okay. So if you're all are agreeing, any other questions?
In the matter of document, twenty dash zero zero two zero five, six ninety-five, Sixth Avenue, Ladies Mile Historic District. Commercial palace apartment store built in phases between eighteen ninety-nine and nineteen eleven, and designed by a series of architectural firms including William Shickle and Co., Buckman, and Diesel, Buckman, Fox, and Taylor &amp; Lee. Application is to construct the rooftop and courtyard additions, install mechanical equipment and railings, replace the cabinets, install lighting and signage, modify ground floor infill, and reuse fire escape. I note that the building's got scale materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Ladies Mile Historic District. I recommend approval by you. That the proposed work will eliminate any significant historic architectural features of the building, that this historic department store building, which is expanded multiple times historically, and has a common existence in the street scale along three street frontages, is supported by additional corrigment at the rooftop. That the design of the proposed rooftop addition, featuring irregular form and metal frames, glazing assemblies, self-divided to reflect the restoration pattern of the historic building, will add a temporary layer to the evolution of this building. That the rooftop addition will be visible from public thoroughfares and limited view corridors, primarily for moderate distances, and will not overwhelm building or neighboring properties. That the rooftop mechanical equipment and bulkheads seen in close parts of the building will be typical of similar rooftop creations found throughout this historic district in terms of materials and appearance. That the proposed expansion and alterations at the inner core will not be visible from public thoroughfare, and historic fire shutters will be relocated and reused where possible at the secondary north port and arc facade. That the new canopy relocated to the west of the current location with less of a projection will utilize shortened tie rods and salvaged brackets, thereby eliminate significant historic components. That the proposed corrugated glass panels at the canopy, while not constructed of a historic material, will recall the profile of the historic corrugated metal while allowing the transmission of light onto the sidewalk. That the proposed pin-mounted letters and light fixtures at the canopy will be simply designed along scale to the canopy and building entrances. That the proposed modifications to the storefront infill at West Twenty-Second Street, including lowering bulkheads, removing existing steps and lowering door sills, installing a pair of double doors, and installing one loading bay will be consistent with similar historic and modified storefronts at buildings within historic district. And that removing minimal sections of plain cast iron and lowering the cast iron sill will provide for more transparency at street level, will be consistent with the commercial character of the street scape, and will maintain significant architectural features with minimal loss of historic fabric. That the existing steps and door sill will be lowered, and the cast iron vault lights currently located at the risers will be mounted logically threshold, thereby maintaining the presence of historic fabric. That the proposed curb cut, which will be typical in terms of size and placement, will be as discreet presence within the street scape. That the removal of the non-decorative fire escape at the West Twenty-Second Street facade will not eliminate significantly the casting. That the modification of use that allows the presence of an existing large projecting sign and flagpole signage will be renounced, that the signage and flagpoles removed prior to issuance of any certificate of occupancy. That the proposed storefront design of the ground floor at the Sixth Avenue facade and the two east door space at the West Twenty-Second Street facade will establish a prototype for storefront replacement moving forward and will not eliminate any historic fabric. That the standardization of three possible storefront entry configurations within the existing store bases and decorative tiers will unify the facades with a simple and clean storefront arrangement. And that the work will not diminish the special architectural and historic character of the Ladies Mile Historic District.
Second.
Colin Baker? Any questions?
And the next item is number three, this is L P C one nine dash thirty-nine zero three eight, application for certificate of appropriateness in Manhattan block, eleven sixteen block twenty-one, two West Sixty-fourth Street in New York society, cultural, individual landmark, also in the Upper West Side, Central Midwest Historic District. Architectural style institutional building designed by Robert D. Towne, built in nineteen ninety-nine to ten. Application is to install signage, as it's last presented at the public hearing, September seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, and our action is taken at that time.
Good morning, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, Presentations Staff. The application, or two and six, for the Society of Educational Culture, is to install ground floor pin-mounted signage on the West Twenty-Second Street facade, when so responded September seventeenth, which is what we're seeing right here. The commissioners who are present ask that the applicant lower the signage to eye level and consider other methods of mounting the sign as well as other plans. So this is the your license, so the sign goes to lower to eye level. The applicant's considered other mounting methods, including on plaque and on rails, and they decided that this would all look the best to this building. And if you're interested in how they came up with that, they could describe that to you.
Just one second, a question quick. Could these letters be mounted with adhesive instead of pins? If they were directly mounted, if there wasn't shadow, what do you think?
As we get open up in, in the beginning, the decision to proceed, if you can come up and answer that question.
Forward left, backward right. Who am I going to...
Thank you. Liam Bowing, architect, Mr. Santi, and Dick Van Duzen, vice president of the board.
Can you attach these letters with adhesive instead of pins?
It was recommended that we do that from a science. You know, something, something we definitely asked, and the texture is very, is that is a very rough texture.
I'm going to just take a minute or less. Not here.
Unfortunately, this is a large piece of skeleton, so we don't actually join it here. We just have a few of this.
Just one, one other thing to note, I think in other cases where the commission has approved pin-mounted lettering, it's institutional use, it's intended to be there for a long period of time versus some commercial that they swap out of Republic, you would say, and that's sometimes made a difference. So we do intend to be there for a title lot.
There's no way the society could ever leave that building. Absolutely, even if we sold it, we would have to retain it. The school, of course, is attached very much to it. The school might, they would still have to provide space in that building as well. And the school actually uses St. Art Building two hundred eighty-two days a year. So we're very much tied with them, and our separation agreement with them, re-arangement of the organization, requires them to keep the Ethical Culture School signed on their bill. And anything we do, that we... And anything we do, we would duplicate the same thing we were ready to sell the building to them, but we would still be meeting things in that.
And also, from what I understand, this is the national center for this organization. Yes, in the organization.
Basically, we are a mother church for the ethical culture movement. Hundred and forty-three-year-old organization, South Third Society around the country, in New York. So they wouldn't let us sell it. We're not going anywhere.
So, and so last time, commissions, any concerns about the location of it, right? And the font, and the font. So all of those have been addressed by lowering it to a, to a non-level, flat level. And the font or more? Are we ready? Everybody is? Okay, so we'll have a motion to approve.
In the matter of LPC that number two is three nine, in the matter of LPC that number is three nine, seven hundred and twenty, dash two. Who's, who versus who, who are Society of Ethical Culture? I note is an obligation to install signage. I note that the building is a individual landmark and its style, scale, material, and details are monkey-featured and contribute to the aesthetic of the temple and historical character of Upper West Side, Central Park, West District. I also note that the dog's pig mounted signage. Oh, I recommend approval that the dog's pig mounted signage is commonly seen as institutional building throughout the historic district. That the size of the individual letter and border size are appreciated for this individual building. That the letters with the mountain on frame disagree and the installation are reversible. And that the work will not retract from the individual landmark of Upper West Side, that Central Park, West Historic District.
Second.
All in favor? Any of those? Okay, it's approved, thank you.
Good morning, I've moved to item four. This is an application for amendments. There's an error in the advertising, so it tells you, this is an application for amendments in Manhattan Block thirteen ninety-nine Lot seven four, six oh five Park Avenue, Upper East Side Historic District. And the application is to amend C of A nineteen dash zero six two eight to modify further modification.
Good morning, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, presentation staff. This amendment is applied Park Avenue located on the southeast corner of Park Avenue North East Street, which means Park Avenue to the west and London Avenue to the east in the Upper East Side Historic District. This proposal was initially running to the record at the public hearing of June four, two thousand and thirteen, and included at the public meeting of June tenth, two thousand and fourteen, and September sixteenth, two thousand and fourteen. The proposal had had twenty, consisted of several components, including window replacement, including entrances, insulation, empty, and one hundred ground floor. Here you can see photos of the existing conditions of the building and regularity of what was previously approved. Here you can see an existing elevation and previously approved elevation at the Park Avenue facade. And the applicants have asked for an amendment to incorporate additional alterations at the base of the building, including a profile marble entrance surround at the Park Avenue facade, part of the residential entry right. The surround would be comprised of the dark marble that was previously approved at the Commons, but previously approved and currently proposed materials can be seen in these images. Here is the intersection through the proposed surround, which will consist of removable marble levers at select locations. Side-by-side elevations of the existing, previously approved and currently proposed Park Avenue facade can be seen here. And here you can see other buildings within this historic district or context. The applicants have no concerning questions.
Okay, any questions?
Do any of these buildings that you're citing as examples have a stone base, I mean a stone entry of different species, and not with that base? That strikes me very unusual.
Let's have a motion.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners, my name is Jackie.
Danny.
Oh, sorry.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Sorry, forgetting a parametric procedure. My name is Jackie Pudievall, preservation consultant on project. To answer your question, yes, these are some buildings, also by Sylvan Bean. Is it Bean or Ryan? Does anybody know? Is it Bean? Thank you. It's always bothered me and I never know. So, so similar period, same architect, also incidentally no style buildings in the designation report, where you have a pale brick at the upper stories and you have a different colored stone at the base to highlight entrances and usually alongside those entrances, you have picture, large picture windows like we have at this building, six oh five Park. So here's another example of that, where the base is called out in a different colored stone, and here as well. Let me just go back to some images. I want to point out that the proposed stone, first off, it's not very different in terms of color or veining from what was previously approved, which is these images here. And the stone that's proposed now, which incidentally, Commissioners, are just being asked to review the cladding that's going around the inframent, not the cladding on the facade itself at the base, but just the inframent portion. But these are the exact stone slabs that would be used, and they are both from the same quarry in Vermont that goes by this trade name, Dandy Marble. So really, the only difference is that they come from a different section of the quarry. So you have a lighter, you know, kind of muted color here, but the stone will be used as the cladding, just on the walls, really. And then a different section of the quarry uses this more expressive Dandy Marble, where the vein will be used to further highlight the entrance in the surround detail. And again, the levers will also be cut out of the same marble, the same more expressive vein marble. Does that answer your question?
No.
Okay, say it again, sorry.
Question is, on many of these modern buildings, there is a stone base. Stone base seems to be applied relatively uniformly over the entirety of that set, that stone base. I, I can't recall any kind of example where one had a stone base on which one put a second kind of stone, or a second, what appears to be a second kind of stone, in a second level of belief, creating basically a kind of arcade or colonnade effect on a, you know, ostensibly, you know, international-style Asian building. And I'm just wondering.
Well, I believe that this building.
It'd be like bases that are different, I don't see.
Yeah, this building has two different colored stone at its base. So the piers are articulated with another color than the, than the background marble. Sort of a dark.
Surround.
But, so you're right, to answer your question, this is the only building of the same period that I can, I can say in the district has a similar treatment.
So, but again, this, in this particular district, no style had been, had been formal meeting, which means it's not contributing. That was, that actually was a change, that was made by the board, that's why they approved this designation. And so, while we're looking at the building as a whole and how these reports work together, we're also really kind of looking at how the marble surround affects the street scale and the character of the historic district as a whole. Are there any other questions? For the.
Just, just. The platter strip and metal, is that the same metal on the canopy?
I'm sorry, say that again?
The platter strip?
This, oh, I see, here.
Are they the same?
No, this is actually a stone. And previously, there was a dark colored stone approved for these locations, these, one of the platter beds. And then this is a canopy that will be metal and canvas. So here's the previously approved granite that was approved for the, those surrounds of the platter beds, and here's the new proposed black granite. There's, I mean, they're pretty similar, just one is judgmental, slightly better texture and color to go with the new proposed stone for the, for the facade cladding in the surround.
Any other questions? So, thank you, thank you for the discussion. Thoughts about this? And I do know here, here, um, there's a, that, that, I have the surround on this building that I think is a little, little extreme on. But I think in the context of the district's surround, relates to the character.
In the matter of Dr. Number LPC nineteen dash three eight six three seven, six oh five Park Avenue, the Upper East Side Historic District. The application is to modify the ground floor. I note this building is not on the which the, the Upper East Side Historic District was designated. I recommend approval, moving that proposed work will not eliminate damage any significant architectural features. That the new marble entrance surround at Park Avenue Ground Floor will be simply designed, will harmonize the building's street scale, and will be in keeping with the simple detailing often found in entrances in buildings of this kind of age. That the masonry grills to the through wall detractors will be well-integrated into the marble surround and easily removed, they will no longer be needed in future. And the work will not attract the Upper East Side's board.
All in favor? Five, any of those? Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, we're going to move into public hearing items now. First is item number one, LPC twenty dash three oh two five zero one. Application for certificat of urbanism of Manhattan Block ten seventy-seven Lot forty-five, six thirty-three Second Street and Parks Historic District. In Rio Federal South Townhouse, called R and Z twenty. The application is to replace windows, paint corners, replace bay windows on the American side and modify the windows.
Good morning, Commissioners, Niamh Pollak, preservation staff. This item is six thirty-three Second Street, located on the north side of Second Street near the intersection with Prospect Park West. The proposal is to replace smart facade windows and paint them black, and then also to replace a non-visible bay window on the Greek facade, and to modify window openings that are both non-visible, and then on the side of the L, there's a new non-visible. Where the cover and the architecture here to.
Hi, friend of yours, architect for this. The first, first piece is the facade piece. There is one error in this building, which is that we're leaving corners white. But we are proposing to change the color of the windows to black. The building, which is on the adjacent properties, and it's an entire block are black, which is frequently used because of. So we're, we're proposing a paint from black because it holds up better in sunlight and doesn't show dirt as much, and we think it's a different element, and it sort of holds up composition to different of the adjacent buildings. In fact, all of those on that block have collated wood windows. But the wood windows are otherwise the same as the, as the existing, I think with a slightly smaller intent, trying to get a little more light into this house. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the corners have been left in white. So that the sort of major architectural, ornamental elements are made white and just the windows are reading as these, our, our pieces. The, the second part of our, and probably the main part of our proposal is to replace the existing bay window with a new curved bay window, and also to add a, add a curved window at the corner down here. This, this is a one-story extension, the houses, we believe, built in nineteen ten, nineteen eleven, and then this one-story piece was added along, probably nineteen twenty-ish, give or take. These two pieces contain an old service kitchen. We're turning them into a dining room. The, the, the other thing we're doing is trying to just create a much stronger connection between, between this dining room and what will now be the kitchen and the garden. Because right now, I would, so this is the rear, the existing rear facade. So you can see, this is a, this funny one-story extension, and then this is a full height extension that's original to the building. And then there's this bay window here that's quite a hot pot, it was covered in tar, it appears to be sheet metal, and when one is inside the house, it's, they give these sort of sixty mil, sixty windows, really cut off all connection to the garden. And then you'll see as I show some of the photographs that there's all sorts of other windows on this house, and we're trying to make it that way. So, so this is the existing bay window, you can see the sixteen over sixteen's, and then there's something here, and this is a little bit different there, and then this one is one of the ones. And we're proposing to replace this bay window. We're also dropping grade slightly down in the basement area. This is an English basement, to allow, to create an actual nice room in that space. And then just trying to have these windows have a little bit more common quality. And the curve has been added, in this case, mostly in support of the curve. Sorry, this, there's some shots of them, so you can see, this is tar covered cement. The, the curve on the bay window, which you say, you can see here, is in support of the curve that's in this dining room, which is tiny, tiny narrow, sort of eleven-foot wide space, so we're really trying to make it so that we're similar to it here, right out of the garden. None of this, none of this stuff is visible from Prospect Park West because ethical culture is here blocking it entirely. You can see here is the, this is the, this section is cut right through this two-story piece, and the color of it is right there. So there, so you can see that there's nothing visible from this, this area. And we're also making larger windows up on the top floor of this. That on the side is visible. So this is the back opening, this is the opening at the dining room. These are just some shots of the existing conditions. These are the shots, aren't they? Yeah, so here's our curved window detail. I think that's it.
Are there any questions?
The existing front facade.
I think so, but we're not sure.
Did you, any finishes announce this on?
On the color.
What color was it?
No, I, I think they've been white the whole time.
Any other questions?
Hi, there, yes. The place of the windows, is that part, is that part of the, 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 the stuff?
So, the windows are before us today because the color doesn't actually, we understand it's an historic color. And I guess the question is, is there any other reason the windows are before us? Otherwise, or we could, or otherwise, where? The windows in the back.
Right, so with the front facade, it's just the finished color at the back is that curving corner window at that extension that doesn't quite meet the criteria of rules, and then also the removal of the bay, which although altered, is still considered a significant feature, and some states are proposing to remove it and replace it with something that's not the same, similar proportions by their design. It's unclear what the underlying conditions are beneath the alterations.
Other questions? Is anyone about to speak on this application? Please, talk to the podium and state your names.
Is Cody here? Hi, my name is Ryan here, who's here as a concerned citizen. I think what should be probably foremost with the back windows is the visibility aspect. If it is entirely non-visible from the street, I think that should match the standard of appropriateness for the commission. If it is entirely non-visible from the street, I think that it should match the standard of appropriateness for the commission, if I'm correct in what the standard should be. One thing to keep in mind is, these are places that people have to live in. I also live in a landmark building, and sometimes the H and D is really difficult to deal with. And it's something that is of pretty high concern to the residents. So, if the back construction has no effect on any sort of visible qualities that any kind of person walking back the street is going to appreciate it for its historic qualities are going to be concerned with, then I think that should be accepted by the commission. As to the painting windows, I think that is probably of more concern, even though it might seem like a minor aspect, just because of its physical quality. But if it matches the surrounding area, then that might be of significant concern.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? We have a resolution from Building Community Board Six. The first motion is applied to the rear of the building and recommend that this be approved on the condition that the rear may just be more in keeping with park slope, character and style. The second motion is applied to the front of the building and recommend that this should be given a review and be issued on the condition that the windows are trying to exhibit a lighter color that is consistent with the existing color in the Neo-Federal Historic Style.
It seems to be a 1930's text photo. Almost looks as though, I mean, I, you know, seem to just say it's over. But the third photo in one, as though the windows might have been dark, even were flooring white. Is it possible? You see that image? Michael, have you asked that question about the original? No?
I think it would have been unusual.
It would have to be good to color too.
As the sash created for color, you got the frame, but not impossible. I think I actually did in school, like had a lot sash in the water.
That's why I finished this analysis.
Okay. All right, so let's, I have a motion to close the hearing. Move to discussion. So, starting with the windows in front, I think that, generally, we go to the very south and happy with color. But maybe with some further analysis that showed a darker sash, we consider this based on historical and geological characteristics of that building. So I think, really, it's sort of denying the application to paint it black, short of that, which would have been set up for that. So, the windows on the rear, we have the current window at the base of the L, which is before us, because of the corner. The middle is a wall window at the top of that side of the L. And then the removal of the bay window, which has been altered, the commission has approved. I think it's unclear what the status of the condition of this one is, which is usually one of the reasons for removal. So, that's something to think about if you discuss the changes of the building. Michael?
I think it is a very appropriate application. I think that it's very careful not to do L. I mean, it has to be seen that that is something that you might want to do. I think that the modifications at the tail of the L or the kind of, I don't know, air niche, natural storage, kind of curved window thingy, I think is probably...
Sure.
It's all right. And I think, I actually think the bay window is not, I think normally, we try to judge whether or not the bay window is a special assembly or not. This one does not look particularly elaborate or detailed to me, and I think I'm okay with its replacement. The only comment I would have about the back is that I think that the use of casing windows on a upper floor rear rounds is a bit unusual, and they might consider going to the double hungs to just kind of have, or to be said, that that is visible for certain angles, including the courtyard. I think that that's kind of a signifier that helps unite the interior courtyards in a nice way. And I don't think it would, I'm just giving a patient.
I'd agree with all of that. I'm just wondering, though, that they're not suggesting just the replacement of existing enlargement. And the enlargement is okay, but is it still appropriate?
Can you show us how visible it is?
So this image is taken, at this point, number two, from Prospect Park West. There's a very, very narrow view past the school and past this first house, where you really just see, like, the upper, this is the only piece that kind of sticks through, sticks through the tree. And it's really just that window on the side of the L is the only thing in the backyard that's visible.
I think it's important to view this not only in light of this public way, but in light of how we would normally view interior courtyard applications that aren't visible this year.
Yeah, that's just kind of the part of it. It's going to be this wide. Is it still okay to be double hung as opposed to what it was?
I hope so. I think so. I mean, I think that, no, look, you know, it's a year, it's not anybody had, you know, non, it's not kind of designed in the first place. And I'm okay with it. I think it's actually, I think I have my own house, or a double hung, at least that one. You can do two double huns.
They could replicate, or they could be on the other side of the L, or channel wise, and also with the large... I think also kind of the arch, arch base, we don't think it's also an important feature that's, that's causing trouble with the location.
Okay, so, I think we really agree with the removal modifications. And a denial of that. So we deny rather than recommend approval. I'm looking at it.
Right, I want to do a off-white or lighter finish barring the evidence.
No, basically, I can talk to that.
Oh, okay.
In matter of LPC 20-02501, 633 Second Street, Park Slope Historic District, a Neo-Federal style townhouse altered in the 1920s. The application is to replace windows, paint corners, replace bay windows at the rear facade and modify window openings. I note that the building's style, scale, and details are one of the features that contribute to the special architectural historic character of Park Slope Historic District. And further note that this building is not part of the unified form of townhouses. I recommend approval, finding that proposed primary facade windows featuring multi-light double hung eisement windows and operable transits will be in keeping with the materials configurations and operation of these store windows. That only a portion of the top floor of the L is visible from a big angles from a public thoroughfare. Therefore, the changes to bay windows and masonry openings in the rear setting installations to the eisement windows will not be perceptible and will not be visible within the context of other historic buildings. That the enlargement of the masonry openings will not result in the removal of any significant features or the full width, or the full width of the rear wall, and will not diminish the predominance of solidity at the rear facade, and that the design of the rear facade will retain a residential scale. However, I find that the proposed block finish for the windows and entrance is not consistent with the building's Neo-Federal style and age. Yeah, and therefore, additionally, that the windows proposed at the top floor rear as French windows are not necessarily appropriate. So therefore, that the finish of the windows and entrance be a shade of white to match or recall the historic and existing conditions, and that the visible window on the L retain a segmental arch head and a double hung operation.
As a pair.
Call the paper. You may proceed. Could you do those modifications for me, and I can all be through?
Thank you. We're going to move to item number two. This is LPC 19-32597. An application for a certificate of appropriateness of rural Manhattan, lot 149 lot 20, 315 Church Street, which is a TriBecky Historic District. The second Empire Style store in Brooklyn, designed by Isaac Duckworth, involved in 1866 to 69. The application is to legalize the removal of fire shutters for talent, as it provides.
Good morning, Commissioners. Elizabeth Decker, Preservation Staff. The item before you is 315 Church Street. The application is to legalize the removal of fire shutters from the rear courtyard with that LPC permit. The subject property is located on Church Street between Walker Street and Lisbonard Street in the TriBecky Historic District. Here you can see the locations of the fire shutter hardware and the rear facade of this hemmed-in and narrow courtyard facade. It's triangle here, which is not visible from any public affairs. Here and before and after pictures, you can see that approximately eight windows at this rear facade had fire shutters associated that were subsequently removed. And I'm going to hand the podium over to the architect to further discuss this proposal and reasons.
Hi. Hi, Jessica Kashi Sada, project manager for Costa Architecture and Engineering, the architectural firm that is hired to expensive this project. I'm just going to back up a little bit. Okay, so, just to talk about the building, the building faces two facades, Church Street and Lisbonard Street. It also has a rear facade that opens up to a light well. Just to note, there's no visibility from any other building into that light well. The neighboring building to the left, 313 Church Street, has windows on its back. And the neighboring building on Lisbonard Street actually has no windows on that lot, wall there. Let's look at these photos before and after, and just as an explanation as to why this even came about. This building is a New York City designated building by the Loaf Board as an IMT and inter multiple dwelling. And just a brief explanation of what that is, for those who may not be familiar. This currently has certificate of occupancy to be a factory, and we are undergoing a process to convert it to residential. There are existing residential tenants in the building that have coverage under the Loaf Law. They were brought in in the 1980s when manufacturing moved over into China. Building owners are facing a problem. They have empty buildings. They brought in residential tenants, and now there are buildings all over the five boroughs that are almost manufacturing buildings that are not good with residential tenants. The New York City Loaf Board created laws that require the building owner to not legalize those existing conditions, bring them up to code, make them safe for those residential tenants. So, within this building, which is fully occupied and already built out already, there are a number of hot water heaters, bathrooms, kitchens, and all these require exhausts. So we came in and we said, okay, cold requires an exhaust for a kitchen, or cold requires an exhaust for an interior bathroom that doesn't have a window. And we proposed to locate these exhausts along this facade, which made total sense because you can't see this facade from anywhere. We're not going to stick it on this, but around Church Street. The problem was that all of these flues and exhausts couldn't cohabit in the same area as the fire shutters. So, our application proposed to remove them. Do you want to just jumpstart on that? But that's really why this all came about. Any questions, any questions?
Are they still there?
No, they...
Oh, they were tossed?
They were tossed.
And so the owner began the work ahead of having a permit, is that...
I think the owners saw, well, we do have active permits. For this specific work type, the mechanical, we don't have. We have an active general construction permit, and we have an active plumbing permit. And I think that they just, you know, they have a contractor, they have contracts, so they priced the area, whatever it was. And they didn't understand that something that's in triangular light well that barely, you know, a human being can fit in would be significant, and...
All right, any other questions?
So they're attaching other HVAC equipment to the outside, so they would need permits for that as well?
Yes, they have an application to do that as well.
Interesting.
Because it's a non-visible area, we would be able to understand.
Okay, so they were, they're applying for separately, that it be legal to...
The application is in the office?
Yes.
To perform the work, to perform the work, do you have to remove the shutters?
So, that's a good question, and you can really see the answer to that in these photos. Take a look at the top left photo there. You can see how the fire shutters, I'm not sure when they were created, but it seems like they weren't really meant to stay open because they can't even open all the way. You can see how they overlap and flap on top of each other. So, I mean, I have thought the idea, well, what if we just keep the fire shutters closed and then mount on top of it or over it and block them? But it actually wouldn't be possible because of the way they're configured.
Because they overlap.
They overlap. They project out. There's no way to just make them fly against the building anyhow.
Would there be a hole open for the fire shutters?
I'm sorry?
A hole open, so you could open it partially and get light in, but not remove it?
I need to see a look at the mechanical. Possibly, possibly we could have done that. I think that the owner also saw that they were kind of deteriorated and fallen off the building as it was, and that was part of the contributing factor.
Okay, we're going to take questions while I come back to you. Brittany Thomas? Brittany Thomas, Historic District Council?
Illegal removal of historic features, even if not visible from the public way, is still a net loss for our historic districts. Fire shutters are endemic to districts like TriBecky, and once they are taken away, they will never come back. Small ratios like this accelerate the scrubbing clean in our city's former manufacturing districts and eliminate evidence of buildings ages and fireproofing, a technology which during the evolution of construction in New York has led to global and perfecting the art of urban building. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? All right, and we have a resolution from Community Board One, recommend that approval of the application. That's sent to the app.
Can someone speak to that? Just the, how are the shutters used historically? Were there, was there a mobilizing there? I mean, would they be historic?
There were windows. I believe they were closed in the event of a fire. And so, and it's very typical for them to overlap each other. Difficult condition. But otherwise, they would be open, overlapping, they'd be deployed and needed.
It would be to fire.
And so the commission has historically, actually, let me just finish with the app.
Sure.
Are there any questions for the app before we close? It's a motion to close the hearing.
One second.
Call the paper.
All right.
So, the commission has historically treated them as significant features, reminders of this period of high-level architecture, has really sought to preserve and make it possible. But I will say the commission has also approved the removal of the condition as per the century. Many buildings in TriBecky and Soho were subject to special permits from the legal conversions. And that was an opportunity for the commission to preserve many of them because some of those special permits send to water and water distribution and placement institutions. But in there, they are severely deteriorated and not visible from even other buildings of the school in the block. Commission has approved the removal, or in some cases, the removal of some, keeping some consolidated. So this is a case where it is in a triangular lot courtyard, which is not visible from any...
anyone and anybody else who's in the lot. I think that's something that we should consider, or consider that in the action.
The point that was made that they overlapped, that they don't stay open, I mean, they seem to, and you've corroborated this, have had such a, and especially clear here, a functional reason to exist, and it's especially apparent, and it's not that somehow they were installed incorrectly or that they are not, they don't make much sense, they make a lot sense.
Someone, Mr. Evans?
So, I think that there could be no question if these were not physical, that's really the issue. I think visibility is everything. Because there is a point that we have made in the past, where the materiality of a historic object has value beyond its visibility to the public sometimes. We, for better or for worse, do not apply that standard to the interior structure of building, to the interior decor of the building, in those cases. We do apply it to the exterior. Usually I don't like the roof, surface, but we apply it to the exterior wall of the building, and I think that that's appropriate. I think it, I think these are important signifiers to their time in New York City's history, and they should definitely not have been removed. There's no functional requirement for them having the vents and pressure could have been driven to the floors up to the roof without penetrating the exterior wall. The reason being done is because these are occupied apartments, and you know, it's a hassle to negotiate with tenants to have them give up real estate, which is my downstairs neighbors' bet. But if the building were to be fully renovated, as it may very well be at some point, I would imagine that's what, that's how it will happen. This is not a technical requirement, this is, you know, I think that they should maintain. Another interesting, you know, it's too bad that there's no mechanism for like a shutter bank, or a historic artifact bank, where in a case like this, if someone's going to trash historic products, they can either be stored in rooms elsewhere, or be paid to a fund that another building can use somewhere else in the city to restore something else, and you just get a, you know, that, you know, that's fine, you didn't throw them out in the first place, you didn't have to have done it, and it could have been used in a more collaborative way. I think those are really the arithability, but I do think that it was inappropriate.
I mean, and I do want to just point out, though, that the Commission has approved the removal of these, and I think there's a question of the public purpose of our work and public education and so on. We think that if it went in a triangular shape, where there's no access, there's little, you know, little knowledge for the public to gain. It's within a non-visible rear facade, where other facades see it, I think there is probably knowledge to be gained. So that, for me, is a distinguishing factor.
If they're the same way, if they want to completely, the entire back wall?
Yes.
But we noted earlier, though, that the second issue, which is how we have allowed them to be removed in that kind of situation where the condition establishes that they need to be removed. Here, they've taken that opportunity away from us.
So, even though I recognize, and I said that we have from the past, there's something about this one that is sort of emphatically there, these shutters are, were, were...
So, what would be there now would be new shutters. Not the historic cast iron shutters. They're going to be new metal shutters.
You know, I do think that, you know, they obviously shouldn't have removed that material, and they should have spoken, you know, landmarks and so forth. At the same time, I think they've come before us and said, you know, we don't have to put less in here because it's invisible, and we're in a, you know, a place where we can't get enough light because of the situation, but it's probably a little broken. They're not, they're not decorated shutters, they're going to crosswalk, but it's not like they're really ornate or anything. So it's, it's, not a good take. I'm unhappy with the way it was done, but I kind of think they had come to us and asked us to, that's what I think. So, reluctantly, okay, because I don't want to say they have to put up new shutters because it doesn't make sense.
It's not, I just don't know how also they were, given where all of these flues are, I mean realistically, if the flues in those locations, which are very close to the windows, everywhere actually, are there, how would the shutters be able to exist?
Well, they're open but not flush.
It's impossible.
Yeah, I think the problem, the biggest problem is the remedy, finding new shutters in the case that nobody can see them, that has that happening. The bigger problem is, you know, this is a violation that shouldn't have happened in the first place, and so we're left with this kind of hollow feeling of getting away with it. And between, should we be able to get away with this sort of thing? Should have come to us, maybe we would have allowed it, and maybe we wouldn't have. Now we're confronted with an impossible solution, which is replicate a brand-new material in a place that can't be seen. So it's a, it's a, we're finding so...
The comment and question one, if they were shutters that were going to be visible and were decorative, obviously it would have been placed even if...
There are some of those as well.
Even if somebody did legally replace it, because it would enhance it and the education and everything else. The other thing is, is where they, I don't know, I haven't looked at it right now, although the violation was in place, if they did at least pay a fine previously for the...
I'm not sure exactly where they are in the enforcement proceeding. I mean, Commissioner, I think I know, I think this is a kind of application where I think it's sort of articulated, I don't articulate, where I do think if we step back and said that these people come in and say they want to widen these windows to get more light in these deep apartments and dark apartments in this light well that's not visible from anywhere, it's only in our building. I think, I feel pretty confident the Commission would approve that, and that report would require the removal of shutters, and I think that, so I just think you should keep that in mind, but not that I'm trying to, but I don't think in that case you should say, the question, would you approve it, do you mean with? I think the question is, you know, are these shutters, so important they should be replicated or replaced, in this case, in this particular context? And I think it's, you know, I can imagine a number of applications where you would agree that if they're in their location and commission and, you know, and relative benefit to the public, it would be okay. I think it's important to get it.
Well, you might also want to keep in mind, however, that if you, if you let this go, you may ever see one of those applications. Because the incentive is completely in the wrong place. Because this is not a unique situation, there are lots of buildings where there's non-visible rear shutters.
And I think in those cases, we, of course, always, they may be acting now, and you know, it's too sensitive, no one supports them, we don't know about them, we don't know about them. You know, I would just point out earlier today, we, you know, looked at a different utilization, like the feeling there was, outstanding, three years after designation, felt the content, whatever, made it appropriate to legalize. That, that changed. So I do think we can take this into account, and, you know, no one's trying to, to take the view that, and I think it's wrong to think to do that, because maybe of the average community, they think that there should be never any legalization, because that encourages people to do work without coming to us personally. We have never taken that view. We've always said, let's look at this and see, you know, reasonably what would we, what we imagine would have done.
And I also want to say that normally we've never seen any evidence that legalizing one application has led to violations, similar violations. And we approve, this work comes to us routinely because it's going through the department of buildings, in this particular case, the remittable applications. But we routinely interview applications, and as I said, it's always the shutters hanging in at times, so I think that it's not necessarily an incentive, we've seen no evidence that that happens. And I think, you know, that there is, there's no question that we think shutters are important, and I think that we all feel very uncomfortable because it was done without permits. And there was some, there's this instinct to sort of slap them on the wrist, give them a fine, give them something so that they don't get away with it, it's just, that's not the way the procedure works, and you're going to have to think about where we'd be if we were looking at this. I feel pretty confident, I think, many people that I've sat through, that this is the type of business we're going to do. And I don't know that I see the public benefit of removing the shutters in this light well.
Let me just ask, I'm completely unaware of fines and that sort of thing, this, I was still better money, I don't know, the shutters, is there such a thing as a fine? Do they pay a fine? It depends on where it is in the process, but when we, there was a lot of concern when we first created the law and accept, gave us the important power, fire that's a criminal house, another administrative or court power, that Jack, it was just going to be a way to, you know, another revenue generator, like parking tickets and everything else, because there was a lot of concern, and we went out of our way, that's under draft law, so that it was compliance driven, and that we, so there were two basic breaks built there, so the first, we issued warning letters, and that had a fine, so if it was a problem, we didn't pick, we didn't, we issued a notice of violation. That too created a situation where you didn't pick, and we get you, admitted liability in a certain document that fixed it within certain parameters. It was only after those two sort of breaks that passed, when we failed to fix the violation, that you were then subject to another dozen violation that would carry them. And I think the feeling was, landmarks locked in place, or maybe landmark owners don't appeal, that we're taking advantage of them, and that that was the general sense of the Commission at the time, it was going to be very compliance driven, not punitive or sort of fines driven, system even though you have, in the end, that you continue to violate your substantial rights.
Without that money, we wouldn't have the fruit plate.
No, that money does go to the general fund. It's not good news that... You were mentioned earlier today that our concern is to the, with regard to the appropriateness of the action that is taking place, and what I typically try to consider is those original, the original statements in the Landmark Declaration, which says that essentially the act that is taking place on the building should improve it or improve the district. I do not see that it's that, improve the building improves the district. Okay, so just, that's actually not a standard of the law. There's no requirement that work improve a district, that work must be appropriate to the district, architectural, the history, the other things in the district. And, you know, that's what, and Jason Building as well, it does not have to, in addition, it needs to be consistent with, and further the purpose of the law, which improve use, enjoyment by the public, of course, is a very big part of that, and also the use of the act of use.
So, all right, so, you know, I think my goal, I hope you'll respond with it, that the, this should not be legalized, I feel very energized, and I feel that this is something that is consistent with what we've lived through in the past.
I agree. All right, so I think you have a question. Do we think that this corner of this building is a lockup from the other two buildings that form a particular, a district, that it's a...
I think the buildings, if this is the older building, ET 66, and the other two are Lisbonard, and more than later, I think that corner was locked up.
But they may reuse the shutters, we don't have the opportunity at this point to look at the metal, to see, you know, this is a fabric, to determine if they're 1860, it's a great change.
I know, but the building itself is marked by that spot, it's just strange. It's interesting. Okay, so I think, I think we're okay with the building. On the matter of LPC 19-32597, 315 Church Street, Tribeca Heights historic district, the second empire style store and lot building designed by Isaac Duckworth and built in 1866 to 69. The application is to legalize the removal of fire shutters without landmark preservation permission permits. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Tribeca Heights historic district. I recommend approval, finding that the fire shutters that were removed were located within a narrow hemmed-in courtyard, and were not visible from any public thoroughfares, that the removal of fire shutters has allowed for the installation necessary, HVAC ducts required for pressure intake in support of the adaptive reuse of the building for residential use, and that the absence of fire shutters at this specific location does not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the Tribeca Heights historic district. All favor? Aye, opposed? For.
Item number two, this is LPC 20-03647, the application for a certificate of occupancy of Grove Manhattan lot 501 lot 7501, 155 Church Street, Tribeca Heights historic district, where this building is owned by Charles Garren in 2018. The application is to paint the roof of the building.
Can you share this with the shape of the building? The application is to work out Elizabeth Street, is to paint the cast iron and the first floor and storefronts, and this floor, aye. This is the current condition of the building, where the ground floor storefronts and cast iron are painted brown, and the upper floor windows, and this is a canteen area, painted gray. And the reason we're seeing this is because the building was constructed in 2004 as part of the restoration work, which was determined that its source colors of the cast iron was brown. The Commission rules state that if material is finished and is in wire pursuant to an LPC modification, or if it's revoked, will be maintained. As I pointed out, four of the upper floor windows and corners are gray, and in the past, the search paint analysis indicated that the ground floor hasn't been painted gray in the past. So it's a proposed...
The same gray as what's above, or it's a different gray? Looks like it's a different, little browner.
On my, resigning with Michael Semerich Architects. From what, if we could go back a couple of slides, what we did was, we found some of these paint chips that were at the building and took those and we matched those close to this color that we're proposing. So that's what we.
How does that compare to the windows above?
This color appeared to be the same color as the windows above.
So that should, so the pewter should be the same color.
Yeah. You know, we can't say with a hundred percent certainty that it's pewter, but that's the closest match we can get.
At least that we approved the windows above during the special permit process, the color of the.
Yes.
And the rendering, it was a little hard to get everything to go with the brown and gray, so I did, that's not good, but it's, hopefully it's a good representation, but it's not exact.
And so when we reviewed the application, the special permit, the paint analysis showed the original color would be brown, but showed gray in other areas.
Just so you know as well, you know, the past four years we've been involved with this building and we actually installed this new entryway, this location here for the retail tenant, and behind this entrance here, managed to build it, we modified, we have access, and that was done about two years ago. So we rebuilt portions of this store. Now, and sort of trying to update the building.
Any other questions? Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this application? And we have a resolution from Community Board Two recommending approval of the application. Final questions? One of the votes that goes in there?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Question? Seems to certainly be consistent with the rest of the facade and doesn't seem to align with special permit and that this gray is where it's evident, and it's still gray.
To her.
And.
Thank you. In the matter of the certificate of appropriateness, Building Manhattan, LPC twenty zero three six four seven, one oh five, Mr. Street, Silo, Cast Iron Historic District, warehouse building designed by Charles Gairdens and built in eighteen ninety-two. Application is to base, at, easily base of the building. I note that the building's scale, style, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and store character of the Silo Cast Iron Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the gray paint color proposed for the ground floor cast iron and storefront infill, while not the original finish, is in keeping with color palette used for cast iron facades and storefronts on mid and late nineteenth century buildings in this historic district. But a paint analysis has determined that this portion of the building was painted the shades of gray several times in the building's history. That the proposed paint color will be harmonious with the existing effort for windows and corners which are painted gray, and that the proposed paint color will enhance the special historic and architectural character of the building.
All in favor? I approve.
Thank you.
The next item is number four. LPC twenty dash zero zero eight six two, an application for certificate of appropriateness of Manhattan block eight twenty-three, lot ten, forty-five, West Twenty First Street, the main wild storage. Propose our staff's store loft building designed by David Tate, building approved by Committee Two, and the application is to install a sign.
Good morning, Commissioner, Supreme Division of Preservation Staff. The project before you is forty-five, West Twenty First Street, which is located between Fifth and Sixth Avenue in Ladies Mile. The building location is highlighted in the map on the map. The proposal before you today is to install a large vertical blade sign on the third floor, which is at the apartment location of the historic blade sign, as you can see in the photo from nineteen fifty, it's red as well. The same proposal was approved by the Commission in May twenty twelve, but that approval has some expires, and some return to present us again. Here is the eighties tax photo, the designation photos. This is the building as it is today, with amputations in red indicating the location of the historic sign on the left here. And this is the elevation drawing showing the approved proposal from twenty twelve, which also included signage above the storefront corners. And you'll note that the approved blade sign is smaller than the store. And here we have the current proposal. The signage above the storefront corners has been omitted, hanging signs on the storefront entrances are being removed. The sign will be composed of black metal with white painted lettering, and the dimensions of the sign will match the sign for twenty twelve. Sure. The question.
Are there any questions? Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this application? And we have a resolution from Community Board Five, approval of application. It seems to be bound to go with the last, to be the case, the sign is smaller, smaller in a way, and the size of the blades. Okay. Michael, we make contact.
Regarding forty-five, West Twenty First Street, Ladies Mile Historic District, the application is to install signage. I note, building scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic property of the Silo Historic District, and I recommend approval, finding that the installation of the vertical sign will not limit any specific architectural features of the building. But there is a strong precedent for large projecting virtual signage building within this historic district, that the scale of the blade sign is smaller than the store signage, height of projection will not correspond to the large scale of this commercial building. If the design, materials and sign featuring black metal and white painted lettering are not calling to attention to itself, and the overall amount of signage is not excessive, nor detracts from the architectural and historic commercial character of the building or the Ladies Mile Historic District.
Second. All in favor? I approve.
And I would like to thank you for the discussion about the fire shutters, because I run into them so often and it's always interesting to this point to honor that these are significant features.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is number five. LPC nineteen dash thirty-seven, five two one. Application for certificate of appropriateness of the Borough of Manhattan block twenty fifty, block one thirty-one, two ninety-eight, west, uh, two ninety-eight, eight, West one forty-fifth Street, AKA six ninety-five St. Nicholas Avenue, and the Hamilton Heights Historic District Extension. Please note this was kind of, you know, incorrect in the application, as the system. Now, this is a Neo Castle style apartment building designed by Fane and Kane, and we mentioned, I said, the application is to legalize storefront installed without LPC permits, to replace the second storefront and to install.
Good morning, Commissioner, Mishal Shabrami, of the Preservation Staff. The application before you is for two storefronts, three ninety-six and three ninety-eight, West seven hundred and forty-first Street, which is also known as six ninety-five St. Nicholas Avenue, which are located in the Hamilton Heights Historic District Extension. The first component is to legalize the westernmost storefronts, this here. This is the tax photo of that storefront, and this was previous condition, two thousand three. So the existing condition is metal cladding that's over the previous storefront, and back to this one, this shows the condition before the work, but it is a violation. So the applicant is proposing to legalize it, they're proposing new signage that would be halo lit letters, and there's existing security cameras that they're also proposing to be used. The applicant is also proposing to remove this metal fence and sign it, that would cover those littering sidewalk. And then, the second storefront is the third westernmost storefront, which had a violation, and with this storefront, the applicant is proposing to remove the modern infill and to install a new metal storefront with panel bulkheads and similar eliminated signage and a mesh scissor gate. And I'd also like to know, because it may not be completely clear in elevation, that these panels here are solid metal, not glazed transoms, and that there will also be cladding behind these scissor gates, not as white as those. So the architect, Matthew David Hickey of FSI Architecture, is here to discuss the proposal.
Thank you, Mishal, for introducing this. I'm Matthew Hickey from FSI Architecture. So here's the designation photo, as Mishal said, we're going to legalize and modify storefronts and propose to replace another storefront to manage signage. So here's the historic district and this building where it's located in the historic district. So as you can see, nineteen forties tax photo, there's sign man up here, there are also awnings present, and a lot of signage going on here. As you can see, there's the bakery over there, if we get a close up, we can see that the sign man exists at this level here. The piers are not completely visible here in the historic lines, which we found online. There is no evidence of that, and we roped certain areas, so it seems like in the past the storefronts actually went out more than they do now. So as we can see in nineteen eighties, things changed a little bit here, signage still a big part of this neighborhood, and we've got an awning here as well. So just showing throughout the ages, this is the designation photo of the two thousands. We also have another designation photo here, which is clearer about these grocery store and, but it's not entirely clear what they did with the bake shop at this point, but we can still see this kind of higher bulkhead with a window sort of display there. So it's different than the previous kind of proportioning of bake shop in the nineteen forties, but we can see that there's an element of the bulkhead at a certain point, and it's a lot of elevation change at these buildings. So as Mishal said, this was the legalized condition designation photo, and then at some point, the ownership decided to change it, and this is a photo of the temporary winter vest of U, which is, yeah, it's there occasionally. So we also had another presentation for this, which was to resolve a violation because they too installed their own signage. And so this is what was approved with an awning and halo lit letters. So as we can see here, you have the bulkhead, and these are the existing conditions we're looking to legalize, there's the, you know, camera, you want a paint to match, the darker finish is desirable in this neighborhood because surfaces are prone to vandalism, as the owner on the corner has stated to me. So I assume that they installed this because they had problems, they wanted to, you know, put these metal elements in behind glass. So these are the existing kind of colors, this is what we're proposing for the signage, which means this, you know, kind of staff level regulations, but because it's a violating storefront, that's what we wanted to show in this presentation as well. There's a ladder up here for, it's actually part of the egress, that there's a roof here and connects to the fire escape. So we have the solid letters at the bottom, solid painted acrylic, and then we have the halo lit letters at the top. So this is the Apollo Deli storefront here, that was designation photo, this was modified, this is a violating condition that's present here. So there are several, you know, modifications that we're proposing, most of which are like removing this and replacing it with a new infill, so removing or kind of replacing the security gate with the mesh scissor gate. And these are the probes that they did to reveal kind of the conditions behind the view, so this has revealed the spaniel beam, this is the column, this is a flat piece of steel photo conveniently, this is a flat steel, white flying piece of steel, same thing on the other side, so there's some kind of plywood cladding there. Uh, this is a steam riser, this kind of dictated our design for the requiring of the scissor gate, because we really want to avoid touching this, and as you can see, the existing infill is kind of like open up here, and then there's a drop ceiling, which is below a historic ceiling, like a tin ceiling, and then they have this kitchen equipment here. So in the other follows, I don't know if to be clear, but there's like a hole up here and that's not compliant, so that kind of dictated the requirements for the design too. This louver beam here, the reason why we proposed these lights here instead of up here is because we don't, we want to avoid kind of running conduces behind this, and through the beam, this limited space that's shown by those probes. So these are the proposed elevations here, it's kind of like a little ramp going here for the accessibility, and then it's recessed here because of the clearance required by ADA, so we can see that here as well. So it's kind of coming in and notches out, and these are infill walls because we don't want to install mesh scissor gate in front of the glass window. So that's existing, that's proposed, that's what the scissor gate looks like when it's open. This is a section here showing ramp at the bottom and, you know, how it's, it's like a glass wall there. So there's also a mechanic reunion, there'll be stuff behind the louver here, you can see an infill wall, and then with the beam, and these kind of historic elements here. So we're trying to minimize the effect on those. And these are details for how the track will be installed, kind of flush with the new infill wall, but crown of the glass storefront. So this is the bulkhead detail showing moldings, and these are existing conditions around the neighborhood, you know, around the block, so to speak, here. And then we have other delis, a similar kind of signage and awnings, and then this is from a presentation that, that was a disapproved or checked, and then it's on the corner there, and these would be, you know, this is what's stated, it's just a barefold of other storefronts that exist at the building, and then these were their existing proposed drawings so far. This, this application is not ever permitted, so, you know, this is their proposal of the time, detail. You have any questions?
A question, Michael.
Yeah, this is an application by the owner, I just don't know the names of them.
The owner of the building? Yes.
So is there any consideration to this, you're sort of establishing some, some kind of idea of a general approach to signage with these, or it's changes from my perspective? Is there any time to just collaborate with the rest of these storefronts in some direction as they become, you know, the build? In other words, I'm thinking in terms of master plan, because it is kind of a mess right now, and they're trying to lean up and make it more attractive, so I'm wondering if the owner will be open to describing, propose certain, you know, certain colors, certain sizes, signage, that kind of thing, just to emphasize it, or maybe types of concrete, this could, you know? Is there any bringing some order to the entire facade?
I, I totally understand that sensibility here. My understanding is that they're trying to resolve violations, and so by resolving the violations, they'll have kind of prototypes for the lettering, the lettering sizes, the colors and so forth, to try and make the difficulties of element if someone else was going to modify, because some of them are grandfathered because of the designation photos, so.
And general tendencies, of course.
Exactly, because tenants, you know, move in and out, so if it has one tenant move out and so forth, you have these rules to modify your storefront, so.
In fact, from what you just stated, yes, they sort of, they're trying to move in the direction of things, something to give to his tenants that would make sense as they change.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this application? Okay, we have a resolution from Community Board Nine in support of the application. All right. I had a question actually about.
I had a question actually about the storefront that's within the gap between the buildings. Does the cornice above the all of the storefronts continue over into that gap and did the cladding of the sign panel cover the cornice?
From my understanding, it does not. This building wasn't here when the building was initially built. I had submitted some other photos that were even earlier than the tax photos that show this building wasn't there. But there is kind of evidence that maybe at some point, they could have had a cornice here, but it's... Yeah, it looks unlikely, but it's a possibility.
Other questions before we conclude? So let's have a motion of closing hearing on paper. So we have two storefronts before us, both addressing... Both of these processes, application and addressing violations. Diane, I think your point is a good one that for the applicant, I think you should encourage the owner to consider doing a master plan. It would be a one-time approval and then you could give the design prototypes to the storefront tenants. And that would hopefully discourage future violations because that the tenants would know what they could do right away. But in the meantime, we have approved work at checkers. And we're now looking at the third from the west and the end circle. In the circles, it seems like there's always a variety of storefronts here which take a little at the end because it wasn't part of the building. But there are questions about configuration and consistency here. So we have a discussion to think about some of those things. John?
I have a question for you first, which is, I think in my time, this is the first time I'm seeing someone proposing scissor gates. Is that something we normally approve?
So we do historic... We approve scissor gates at staff level on an existing storefront. And in fact, historically, the commission encouraged them because they didn't have complete housing projecting in front of it. The reality is, is they're less desirable from a security point of view. And they also, if you have a small storefront, because they close on themselves, they block transparency. And so we told landlords, tenants, we have small storefronts wanting to transfer the space as possible. So we have approved roll-down gates with interior housing and interior security gates. But we've also approved system gates as well. The issue, the thing that's a little bit different here than applications that we normally see is that because they don't want to block transparency, they're reducing the size of their storefront windows to fit within the style of the buildings. They're creating piers clad sections. And that's a little bit of a... Normally, you would just have your storefront go from pier to pier and then the scissor gates in front of it. So thoughts?
I'm actually going to just agree with Diane's question, like his comment, which is that it would be helpful, I think, for... In terms of the facade of the building and actually in terms of the businesses being able to promote themselves in that in a way that makes sense. If there's some kind of glitter and some kind of... I'm going to follow that again. We know the master plan not only has to do its signage, but also potentially the awning. Because if someone, someone's awning over their window, there should be some kind of standard that the existing or future tenants have to...
To be clear, we have rules that allow staff level permits for these. So there are standards, but I think the advantage of the master plan is the owner does the approval once and for all. It's really about streamlining the relationship between the owner and hopefully that will lead to violations.
So actually, I think it would be helpful for the businesses themselves when I look at first, after the new dragon signage, it's like, obviously, it's almost illegible. And even though the street is a street that's had a... The street funds had a cacophony of signage. This would be a great time to...
So the application for us today is to legalize one storefront and replace another storefront in violation.
Right. And the signage itself actually meets staff level criteria. Other than that, the one on the far right storefront of that wing is on top of a panel that itself was installed down from the panel is the part of that that needs to be revised or changed. So it's really the applicants of panel cladding on the side of that storefront on the right of the storefront itself. And then the second piece is that they're supposed to use storefront, but not the signage components.
So just so I understand, so the staff is... Because this is approvals at staff level, is the staff saying that they think the signage is okay?
It's more that it meets the criteria of rules. Without judgment in either direction.
So for us, so you can't recommend, or you can't recommend a master plan for that sign?
I mean, we talk with applicants and owners all the time about these sorts of things. So we can continue to work with them. And perhaps this could turn into a master plan so that there is uniformity and consistency going forward. But it's not actually a requirement. There are options at different tenors, with different types of signage, this is true.
So we all... I think you can always recommend it strongly. In some cases, we recommend a master plan, but we can't compel the owner to comply with a master plan.
Okay. So then just to hopefully we will do that. And I guess in terms of how these relate to the historic configuration, you know, just a little... I want to say I'm a little confused as to how they're really related. So I'd like to hear some input on that.
And one thing, just to give everybody some context, maybe through the comments, is that we know that historic storefronts, regardless of building type, age, or style, typically have three components, arches, livers, bulkheads. And if in the proportions are right, there's no opening transoms. And generally, the storefront is composed of three elements. If within an opening defined by piers and a lintol. And so when we are looking at storefronts that's from the street side, the opening changes, they're varying that general configuration. That's when we start to look at the context, why might it be included here? When we... Sometimes we approve integral old ass security gates where the housing is on the inside. Or there's a top ceiling condition and the commission wants to have the storefront infill fill the entire opening. We've approved backing transoms. Or in some cases, we've solid panels that have a transom proportion. But it's a question of the details and how all those parts fit together. Michael?
I think that generally, this application is okay. And I think that the discussion about having a master plan is great. And I think we should have a master plan open. But I think that the work for us can create the de facto template for that master plan. And what I would suggest is that, looking at the historic photos, it seems to me like the cacophony occurred consistently, but it did so below the sign bin. The sign bin remained relatively inviolate relatively longer than you might expect. And certainly relative to what happens below it. So I don't think it should be our job to, you know, clean it up and make it look like a village or anything. I think it should... On the other hand, I think we should ask that the sign bin remain relatively inviolate. And to that end, I would suggest that even though the staff felt that it can't be for the new golden dragon was okay within it, that they consider putting it below it. And that would address the size of tab type issue that you've been raised. And I think that if a probe revealed that there was a continuation of the cornice, sign bin within and underneath Block 11, that's a sign bin area, that that should be where we can restore it. But if it's not, I think it's okay as is. And I think that the hussy little golden touches are fine and appropriate to the neighborhood.
Anne?
I just have one possible suggestion for the Apollo Deli that I understand you want to have a solid panel behind the scissor gate. And I think the scissor gate is more appropriate than the golden down gate on the outside. I just wonder if the panel on the metal transom area should extend all the way to the end so it looks like the storefront continues even though the open door office is reduced.
Sorry. The official letter really suggests the... What's behind scissor gates? They might give the scissor gates, but I'm not sure. So I think the... So I keep refining that the sign bin should be preserved and at the end storefront, that if there's a cornice underneath the canopy, it should be removed. If not, the canopy is okay as is.
That's what I got.
And that the configuration of the storefronts below the sign bin, while there's variety, there was historically variety. And that the configuration of these storefronts fit within that historic variety. And another detail that we recognize is that the proportions of the top panel, transom panels, extend to full.
What's that last one again?
Extend to full.
Transom panels extend to full. Another bar in my name, A West 104th Street. Also known as 655 San Diego Avenue. Nice story to... A application to legalize a storefront installed without LPC permit permits. Place a second storefront and install signage. Building that builds here as details the multiple features of the church through a special architect and store actually the same. This is my recommendation approval. Some applications finding that a creative postwork has not rolled out across many significant areas. The storefronts of this building certainly have their own design there for... The presence of storefronts featuring different sun designs will be consistent with the historic development of the building. That the wooden materials and presence of large displays of bulkheads of the existing proposed storefronts will keep you in such aspects of the historic storefronts building to this time, style, and age. That the proposed halo light and mountain lighting and post storefronts will feature street lighting typical of the street state replacement condition while scaled for storefronts and sign bands. And the existing and proposed interventions will keep you with the historic color palette building to this time. And that panels at the transom level of the store to be modified will extend over the cladding of the piers. The canopy of the end, a hallway storefront, to remove the sign bin extending behind it.
On paper, can you oppose? Let's prove those modifications, Michal can help me prove.
Okay, next item is number six, LPC 19-35, week 47. An application for a certificate of appropriate listing of a red Manhattan, Block 1906, Block 1329, Lenox Avenue, the Mount Morris Park Historic, the Ozarks House. Designed by parents true and built in 1899. Applications to enlarge and refine measuring abilities under the facade.
Good afternoon, the conditions, London Robinson Square. 225 L. San Antonio is located on the western side of Lenox Avenue between 121st and 172nd Streets within the Mount Morris Park, this one, this one. This application is filed in conjunction with the board of standards and appeal of PSA application for various of legally required windows within the 30 foot, between 30 feet of the rear block line. These are existing condition followers. And as you see, the building question is made to the panel. The application before you is to enlarge and combine measuring rooms at the rear facade. There's the existing condition. There's a proposed condition. Proposed condition in context of the number of hours. With the inclusion of the... And it's rare for the schoolyard. And a renegade service encampment. Again, existing condition proposed. The applicant is here to answer more questions on the project.
Anything you'd like to add?
I think one different point kind of through maybe the overall. So if there's any questions, we'd like to answer them.
I'll just add one point of clarification. So the existing rear wall that you're looking at is actually a recently reconstructed wall. So prior permission approval in 2010 approved that. And so the blind windows, another configuration, you see that were part of that pool. But the facade did exist at that location. Prior to that was the rainforest condition. So it's not a historic facade, it's a modern facade that's there now. The wall reviewed that some hundred years ago. And so they're asking to modify that modern facade. Again, so the same location, it's more the opening of the combination of all these. And I think in the journals noted that those are actually awkward. I think we have to hold high or a particular use of the current documents. So if you have questions about that, you should answer them.
And as was presented, is the... It's probably called the existing sector. It's visible through the schoolyard. Does anyone like to speak on this application? And I understand that you went to the community board, but they had not sent us a reservation. Any final questions? Again, a motion of closing hearing. On paper? Okay. So if you'd like to go back to the view from the street. Just to see the rendering. It's nonhistoric wall. The window openings, proportionally, even those are double height. And then proportions within that double height steadily relate to residential window heights. And the luxury window are low levels, 10% of the fruits. So it seems a little bit weird.
And another point I did, that is, I don't know. I'm always happy to start the show if you'd like to.
The application is to enlarge and combine measuring openings at the rear facade. Note that in total scale, materials and details amount of features that contribute to the special architecture and historic character of the Mount Morris, the historic district. And we've done approval finding that modifying this modest, little facade at the rear extension will not alter any significant architectural features. Will be visible in conjunction with the front facade of the house. And working, it would only be visible from upper floor floors, from seven feet, and this is for a schoolyard within the context of other simply designed secondary facade. The house is not in part of extended role, and the rear facade of extension does not align with facade of neighboring buildings or mansions in terms of their patterns and potential maintenance and windows. Therefore, the whole world will not be missing any unifying features at this wall. The height of the opening will cross up the existing height on the floor level at this rear extension, hereby directly relating to the design of this extension. But the proposed bi-fold doors assembly and railings and building will feature simple design and materials and materials typically found with this street state historic district, thereby helping the main subordinated process of the street state use. As a proposed solid to void ratio at the first and second levels will be consistent with the ratio of the upper floors of the roof of the building, and will maintain a level of solidarity, solidarity compatible with the rear facades of the neighboring buildings, thereby helping the work we've made, among its context and the size and placement of horizontal band. The bi-fold doors will help in feel relate well to the division of windows between floor heights and neighboring.
On paper?
The last item of the day is number seven, LPC one nine dash three seven two one one, an application for certificate of appropriateness of a road in Bronx, block fifty fifty-two, block forty-three, eighty-eight, fifty fifty-one Iceland Avenue, the Fields and Historic District. A clothing revival style house is owned by Julius Greger, enrolled nineteen twenty-seven in the public. Application is to construct this.
Permission to raise this preservation staff. The application for revival style legacy of avenue is for construction of a rear yard addition, this is a central house. And the location of the house is here in this room. And this, and this is the house here, and this is where the proposed addition will be, there is currently an existing pool. So the addition is proposed to be a enclosure for a neutral. So the existing condition and proposed addition. And the addition will be minimally visible from several locations, but in the Fieldston, the master plan doesn't allow for some additions at that level. So you're seeing this primarily because of the size of the addition. So the architect will talk more about the design as well as how this compares in density to other lots in this system.
Please come up and say anything.
Trying to do this from here. John Field, building studio architects, we're here with our clients as applicant. This is fifty fifty-one Iceland. Remains on the front pretty much as it was in the forties. A few more trees. Again, it's at the top of the. We're at the top of the Fieldston district. Lisa showed us where everything is. This is a map in leaner times where there was less density outside of the district. We're in the lasers. So this is the view from Iceland going uphill. We have on the right, Delafield Avenue, which is unimproved but mapped as a street, so this is actually a corner lot. Again, the front of the house. You'll see Delafield. You'll see Delafield on the left, our proposed addition area in the rear, and Iceland across the front. Again, the red line is the district. Our addition sits in the rear of the house over the existing pool deck area. This was also done with natural area in the Bronx. And we are actually improving the impervious coverage on the lot by about four percent. We're removing some of the driveway, we're using some grass paved blocks. And our addition is primarily over the area of the existing blackstone pool deck. In terms of density within the district, Fieldston is characterized by different lots, different lot sizes, different densities. This is the top part of the district. We've got a map here of density and lot coverage in the district. And you'll see our project here highlighted, while it's in the denser top third of the properties, it's in the groupiness less dense. When we examine this closer at a more granular level throughout the entire district, we see the same result. These are lots that are in the silver eighteen thousand square for size to ours. Again, we're in that top third density. In terms of typology, we also have two houses within the district that have enclosed pools. We sit between these two in terms of density. Again, our rear yard pool, we can talk a little bit about visibility nets. This is the proposed design. It's a low slate overhanging, shrugly overhang roof, which takes views from the original house. We have a transparent glass skylight ridge at the top and transparent glazing all the way around. There was a mock-up construction in the rear yard, picking up the eve lines and ridge lines of the building. The areas of visibility from the district, this is from the front of the house, through the gate on Iceland Avenue, there's approximately twenty-two feet of visibility at a distance of one hundred and forty-four feet. You can just see the orange line, which is the edge of the pool cabana area. That's Fieldston. We'll talk about the design in a minute. From two hundred and fiftieth street, which is behind the property, this is across the lounge roof at a distance of two hundred and twenty-five feet, you can see for approximately forty feet. Just the ridge of our roof, that's actually the area where the transparent glass skylight is. In the background, you can see the slate roof of the house and the Fieldston chimney at fifty fifty-one. Those will remain visible and intact. The other area of visibility is from outside of the district. This is from Henry Hudson Parkway, again, across mapped Delafield Street that's overgrown at a distance of three hundred and fifty feet. You can see thirty feet of the back of the pool building. On the right, we have the transparent corner of the building, and on the left, you'll see a vertical that marks where the cabana is. So the design of our house excludes from the materials of the original building. We have bluestone papers. We are using Fieldston to match the chimneys for the cabana area, a slate roof and transparent glazing. We've held the building away from the existing house so that you can still see rear facade and maintain the existing original windows into the dining room and interior spaces. You'll see there's very little change to the existing house, our plan self done here.
Can I just ask while you're on my plan, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the site plan. Is there the one hundred and seventeen, is, an existing stone wall? Is there an existing stone wall that is being retained?
The existing stone walls are being retained. Let me see if I can go back to the site plan for you. So this, what's interesting is this whole existing stone, the laser's not, but that existing stone wall on the lower left of the proposed site plan actually goes beyond our property, and all of that's being retained. There's not, that's not even part of our property. But we are retaining that. There's a steep slope buffer there with natural area, and we are cantilevering this little piece of the pool over.
Sorry, the stone wall on the left side of the pool in the existing on the left? There's this.
No, so that stone wall is not being retained. That is where we are cantilevering our structure over the let's say.
So how tall is that stone wall? The existing on the left side?
That stone wall is existing about four, four and a half feet high. You'll see some steps right there.
Are there any images of it?
Really, let's see if you can see it in the view of mockups.
No.
You can see, so you can see it right here. It goes up, it goes down about, you know, it goes up two feet, it goes down about thirty feet. These are steps in the background over there.
Other questions? Yes.
Does the pavilion, does the pavilion roof touch the existing building?
In terms of the material, yes, the slate does match the existing roof.
Touch. Does it physically touch?
They physically touch along the lower eve below the second floor windows. So, yes.
Is there a section line or something, which was a connection?
There was, it may not have been there. You can see it, you can see it here. So we're coming in below the second floor windows with the slate and then our transparent blocks.
Any other questions? I have some testimony, someone will come back to you after that. Brittany Thomas?
Brittany Thomas, representing Historic District Council. As stated in the Fieldston Historic District Designation Report, this house is a representative example of colonial revival style residential architecture. As such, HTC finds that proposed addition to be an intervention to this unique and scholarly revival house. Though visibility would be minimal, due to the property's surrounding trees, the level of visibility would undoubtedly increase once the trees are bare and hold their locks. While we would not necessarily object to the added outbuild of the rear, this proposed addition is excessive and inappropriate, but the footprint is larger than the house itself.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? Would you like to respond to something?
In the design of this, we have maintained this transparency to combat exactly this view from outside of the district. I should also note that the community board and Fields and Property Owners Association have approved this.
And I do have, I have community board resolution, correct? I approve of the application.
I actually have a question.
Yes.
I just wanted to know if you'd consider, you know, you've brought into the house, if you'd consider just making that area, you know, separating instead of it as a separate building, whether it was glassed up or something. Explain what you meant.
So, so in terms of the design, we've used glass extensively on the roof here to keep it transparent. Where actually touches the building, there is an overhanging slate roof, and we felt it was better and more appropriate to weave the two different pitches altogether with slate and try and get glass and some kind of flash into work. We also work with staff, this has been in natural area for a long time, to reduce the footprint, reduce the scale of this, this starting as a much larger portion.
Any final questions? Yes.
I don't, I don't like this question, because there's two types here of kind of existing building. You have a pavilion, which is marble, and I think you did a wonderful job, and it's beautiful. I just question how they come together, whether they should be a separation, a change of scale, and by separate marble.
Diana, you were asking a similar question about whether you would separate the two perhaps something smaller than the two between.
And why they chose to do that this time?
And in response to that, in response to the design, what we have done with this transparency at the facade of the existing building, you're looking right through our structure here to the low eve of the existing house, to really keep that visible and transparent in the street, where we're touching roof is at that slate roof line, at those existing overhangs. Because that was, that was the most appropriate way we could get the two buildings to interface in a minimal fashion.
Was ever I was asking about action joint? I think I'm the same, and how it was actually physically joined together. What I'm asking, what I'm asking is, one is the pavilion, one is the existing building, beautiful building, and how they come together, I question, just the wood roof, it's one of them, two of them, and I thought I could be able to do that.
Yeah, so I think you chose to have the two evens connect to preserve the facade below, the view of the facade below. But another approach would be to treat these as two separate structures and have something smaller of a break that would connect.
Correct. And in terms of, in terms of the design, we felt this was, was better for the existing house.
Any last questions? And let's have a little check the closing hearing. Thoughts?
Yeah. Well, this is a wonderful way to end the day. I think, I wonder if the house gets a little developed or a little changed since its construction. Charming and beautiful house. Beautiful, I think. I think this is a totally beautiful structure. About the place of transparency that it was making of the roof to reflections and Y S and that sort of, right, no, no Y S. I think the intent of the design is made clear by the way. I want to comment just a couple, a couple ways on some of the detailing. I think Sarah framed the alternative issue very well. I think that that could have been made very interesting too, in the hands of this architect. I'm willing to, because of the skill, the rest of the building, the condition, I go along with his approach. I think the visual detailing, as Roberto mentioned a minute ago, is quite sophisticated and beautiful, including the top blazing, but particularly the eve detail on the side that I think is really beautiful. All of this will, of course, evaporate if the construction itself is in any way inferior to the design, so I hope that this sophisticated design will be totally by the contract. But I can use a very appropriate addition to the building for an interesting building in our house.
Diana?
Yeah, I feel that the material is very appropriate for the context and the function. And it really has relatively good visibility considering all the foliage and the position of the new sites. I think that where it is visible, the transparency will not inevitably impact the rustic setting of the house. And in general, share the, it's a good, I just see.
I think that I agree with Everard's sort of line of questioning in that it leads to my, not being terribly sure that really the eve should continue and connect with the new roof line. I actually think the second alternative should be investigated, which means that there would be kind of a lower piece, either stone or, or stucco or stone, stucco and stone or something that would be kind of a connector piece and would allow you to go from interior to material without trying to kind of mediate that, that space between. that, that space between, which would be difficult with the roof, material.
Let's see, to comment about the roof line, which we're going to best, we're best. I understand that the, 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 I want to have those two roof lines meet. But I think just given the, the proportion of the building, trying just to put another little building in between them, I think that would be, that would be more disruptive. So I think kind of the eve lines flow is actually probably better solution there. Keeping the glass, glass walls is the, is the way for the evening. And I think that's a great strategy for this. So I think that can better incorporate.
I'd say we will, and some comment if you may, I think of the two choices, you know, the applicant's sense is correct, flashing, if you were to go with the alternative, nicely flashing, it would be less, I think that's likely trying to incorporate.
Keith?
I agree, but I actually, it was an incredible surprise that this was a solution that they came up with, given the, what the, given the design of the building, but it fits incredibly well. And I also, while I wish we could see it for better, the connection, conceptually, I'm not having.
And Everard?
Still feel that it would be better if you were.
It's a habitual conversation. My only issue is basically, could there be a house?
I think the solutions or objections are considered, but the site is an effort completed.
And some English, very sound.
I think.
So we have, I know for a bit of Google Ice presented today, so.
In the matter of fifty fifty one, Iceland, that's Iceland Avenue and Fieldsden Historic District. This is an application to construct a rear addition. I note that the building scales, materials and details are one of the features that contribute to the special architectural historic character of the Fieldsden Historic District. Recommend approval, noting that the proposed addition will be located at the rear facade and will only be very minimally visible in great distance through limited view corridors along Iceland Avenue between the Fishes Street and the Henry Hudson Parkway. That the construction of the addition will not damage or alter significant architectural features of the house. That the proposed addition will be subordinate to inharmonious way. The roof line of the existing building is substantially lower than the peak of the roof of the main house, of the main portion of the house. That the use of slate shingles, natural stone and white painted stucco will be harmonious with the historic materials of the house. That the glass walls of the addition will give it a, will give it a light, open character and presence in the yard that differentiates it from the house, while allowing the historic rear facade to be seen clearly. That the addition will not result in loss of or damage to significant landscape improvements and will be set harmoniously with the existing rating and terracing of the site. That the lot coverage of the house with the addition will be within the range of other properties in the vicinity. And that the proposed addition will not detract from the special historic and architectural character of the building or the historic district.
Call paper. Any opposed? That'll prove, thank you. All right, thank you, Miss Nuss. And lunch will be.